Signature is under those bricks, right?
King of the Oak Park City Council is called to order September 2nd, 2025 at 7:04 PM. Please stand for the pledge to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Oak Park Easy Roll is passing by right now.
Oh, cute. Uh, the Oak Park Easy Roll is biking by if you're a biker. Um, they, they go slow but long and it's a fun, it's a fun Tuesday night event. Starts behind the library. Uh, roll call, city, uh, city clerk, Ed Norris, would you call the roll?
Mayor McClellan.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Whitehead.
Here.
Councilmember Edgar. Councilmember Radner.
Here.
Councilmember Crawford.
Here.
We have a quorum. Uh, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda are routine items presented for approval without discussion as a single agenda item. Should any member wish to discuss or disapprove any item, it must be dropped from the blanket motion and considered separately. A, regular city council meeting minutes for August 18th, 2025. B, special council meeting minutes for the same date. C, payment of invoices from OHM advisors for engineering consulting services in the total amount of $20,026.25. D, request to approve payment, payment application number four for the 2025 landscape maintenance contract to Capital Landscapes of Ferndale, Michigan in the amount of $3,668.12. E, approval of payment application number four to eminent excavating local LLC of Dearborn, Michigan for the 2025 water main replacement project, M769, in the amount of $71,916.99. F, approval of payment application number three for the 2025 Northfield reconstruction project, M770, in the amount of $425,001.77. G, approval of payment application number one for the 11-mile road alleys and parking lot reconfiguration project, M694, in the amount of $289,478.05. That's all the fun stuff that's happening behind the 11-mile, um, stores and restaurants. H, request to approve payment application number four for the 2025 lawn maintenance contract to Capital Landscapes of Ferndale, Michigan in the amount of $7,299.71. I, payment request from Newman Smith Architecture for architectural services on the Event Hub next door uh, for the total amount of $18,930.87. J, new and renewal of licenses, business licenses for September 2nd, 2025. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make the motion, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
So moved, second.
Okay, um, uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Any visiting elected officials? Seeing none, we are on special recognition and presentations for our retirement recognition for dispatcher Mary Ann Page. And to discuss this is our public safety director, Steve Cooper. You're gonna start it first.
Yes, I'm gonna start it, thank you. Well, uh, Mary Ann, we have a certificate here to provide you. I do this a little bit begrudgingly because I don't want you to go. Let me read this, um, though. In special recognition of Mary Ann Page, the mayor, council, and administration of the city of Oak Park, Michigan, in testament and tribute to her distinguished public service and lasting contributions to the city of Oak Park and its residents, wish to express their sincere appreciation to Mary Ann Page. You have served as a pillar of integrity in this organization and have helped to set the city's high standard of excellence. You have served as a source of guidance, support, and leadership for your colleagues and is those qualities that will leave a lasting imprint on the city of Oak Park. Your dedicated spirit, wealth of knowledge, and overall dedication to the city of Oak Park will be sorely missed. Your great personality, friendliness, hard work, all of the rest of that will be missed too. Thank you so much for a great career and a lasting impact on the city of Oak Park. Um, on behalf of all of us, thank you so much. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Director Cooper.
Thank you, City Manager Tungate. Good evening to our mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, city council, and City Manager Tungate. Um, I want to thank you for allowing me, uh, this opportunity to acknowledge our dispatcher, uh, Mary Ann Page, as well as you can see the rear of the council chamber is lined with all of her coworkers that also admire and love her dearly and, uh, want to pay their respects for such a distinguished career. I want to congratulate dispatcher Page on 26 years of exemplary service. It has been my pleasure and honor to serve alongside her for the past 26 years. You have served this city with the utmost class and integrity. Dispatcher Page has received numerous awards and citations during her distinguished career. One in particular that I would like to share and I wanted to highlight, uh, and this happened, uh, one shift when dispatcher Page was working the, uh, the evening hours. While working dispatch center, dispatcher Page received a call in the nighttime hours where two young children were trapped alone in their home when the home caught on fire. The home quickly became engulfed in flames and started to immediately fill with smoke. One of the children dialed 911 and the call was answered by dispatcher Page. The child was panicking and informing dispatcher Page that the home was on fire and that he was trapped inside the basement and unable to find his way out of the home safely due to the fire. He informed dispatcher Page that his other sibling was also trapped inside the home in an unknown location. Dispatcher Page, and I say this, uh, because I can't find another, uh, word to really express it, outstanding does not do this justice. Dispatcher Page did an outstanding job of keeping the child calm, advising him on how to alert officers of his location in the home, as well as techniques to keep the smoke from overtaking him in the room he had taken shelter. Dispatcher Page remained on the phone with the child the entire time, reassuring him that help was on the way and that he would be just fine. After several minutes, induced specifically to dispatcher Page, officers were eventually able to locate the child and the sibling, rescuing both out of the home.
Thank God.
I highlighted that incident, but that's just a singular incident of many where dispatcher Page has performed above and beyond the call of duty. Some others include instructing family members and loved ones over the telephone on how to administer CPR while officers and additional medical support, uh, were attempting to arrive on scene to assist and render aid. Monitoring vehicle pursuits and coordinating backup officers to assist. Quickly gathering and disseminating valuable information to officers in the field on a rail in progress crimes. Her laser focus and quick actions have led to the arrest of numerous suspects to include robbery armed, carjackers, home invasion, auto theft, domestic assaults, intoxicated drivers, sexual assault suspects, homicide suspects, and more. Our dispatch team is the first point of contact for the public safety department, yet they quietly stand humbly in the shadows going about their duties, never asking for glamour or praise. Without them, the public safety department could not function. We owe them and specifically dispatcher Page a debt of gratitude. I've worked with dispatcher Page personally for many of my years on, uh, the same platoon. So when I stand here and I speak, I speak firsthandly about her knowledge, her dedication, her professionalism, and the excellent work ethic that she has displayed throughout her career. Dispatcher Page has been committed to this duty for over two and a half decades. And again, I stand here beside her proudly thanking her for her sacrifice and her commitment she has made to this great city. And I say to her, "Job well done." I wish you all the best as you start the next chapter of your life. I love you and may God continue to bless you and keep you.
What do you say after that? I just want to thank the citizens of Oak Park for always, uh, supporting public safety. It's, uh, without them, we wouldn't be there and, uh, we are there for them, especially dispatch. And I want to thank all the officers, thank you so much throughout the years. A lot of you, uh, you don't know some of the ones that I've worked with and I want them to know, even though they're not here, that I appreciate them so much. Uh, my fellow dispatchers, you know, nobody knows like we know how hard it is and, uh, I appreciate you all. I appreciate seeing you here. Thank you. I thank you because when we needed more help, Brad and I came to you and you said how many, how often, and how soon, and it happened. So we really appreciate that support. I also want to thank, um, my family for the times that I haven't been there or haven't been able to make, you know, the family things. They understood. We had to reschedule, schedule again. The job is hard. It's 24/7, 365. You miss things. But when I came to Oak Park, I was, uh, um, newly single mom on my own with three children, 10, 7, and 5. And those three children are here today and I love them very much for being here. And I just really want to thank you guys because you know I came home stressed some nights. It was a tough job and, and, you know, I'm sorry for some of those times, but this job allowed me to get to this point and to get you guys, you know, to where you're at today. And I'm so very proud of all three of you. I love you very much and, and together we did it.
It's here for the family.
I'm sorry. So, I've been here 26 years. I've been married for 15 of them, so also, all, this man came into my life, my husband, and he's gonna retire in February. We've worked kind of opposite shifts because he has a kind of crazy job too, so we're gonna find out. Is that, is that the magic, the opposite shifts or? So we're about to move on. So I just say to all of you officers, stay safe. Don't be mad when you get a 10-9. Just take a deep breath and, and let them know because if we don't know where you are, you're not safe. So work together and, and stay safe and thank you all so very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council members and Mary Ann and your family, if you'd like to join us up front for some photos, please.
Just a small aside while we're, while we're, uh, waiting to line up. I was in the dispatch center when a call came in from, uh, I don't know, it sounded like a young adult about his mom having a heart attack. And I listened to her assure the young man that a car is already on the way. And for, while it's on the way, I'm gonna ask you some questions. Because I know she had to ask him questions, but if she didn't say that first, he would be pulling his hair out, wondering why are we dribbling away when my mom is sick? And she thought about him enough to say that to him. And it just impressed the socks off me.
Excellent. Excellent.
True for all this down there.
Yes, sir.
All these cops are coming up here.
There we go. All right, ready? Here we go, big smiles. Yeah, we gotta make one more. Hey, everybody, good smiles.
Mary Ann, stay there. Mary Ann, just stay there. Bring some other, others up.
Council members. Jason.
First call coming in. If it goes wrong from the start, it just would mess up everything. So just want to say appreciate you. Thank you.
Vernon Street Park Block Party event to be held September 21st, 2025, from 2:00 PM to 6:00 PM. Is there a motion to approve this special event license?
So moved.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Ordinance, first reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter 2, Administration, Article 3, Boards and Commissions, by adding a new Division 2 Juneteenth Commission. And would you make this motion?
So moved, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
I will second that.
All right. Mayor Pro Tem Sean Whitehead was the one that brought the idea for starting a Juneteenth Commission and, and formed the first Juneteenth Commission, um, which has been highly successful. Everyone loved it. Is there, are there any discussion or questions about the ordinance?
Just want to thank the city clerk, if I may, Madam Mayor. Um, just want to thank the city clerk's office and our legal team for, um, everything they've been doing to formalize, uh, Juneteenth. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have a second, correct?
Will you?
Yes, okay. Uh, if there are no, are there any discussion? This is just us, a city attorney, we are just forming a new commission, correct?
That is correct. It's going to be incorporated into Chapter 2, Administration, Article 3, Boards and Commissions, by adding new Division 2, which is currently reserved.
Okay, thank you. Uh, roll call, please.
Uh, Councilmember Crawford?
Yes.
Councilmember Edgar? Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, Mayor McClellan?
Yes.
Councilmember Radner?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Whitehead?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. It is now the City Manager Eric Tungate's section.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, 10A1.
Uh, Mr. City Clerk, could you take this one, please?
Sure. A couple of weeks ago, we, uh, interviewed applicants for boards and commissions and, uh, we were able, unable to, uh, appoint, uh, a couple of positions. So those are before you tonight. Uh, the first is, uh, a request, a request to appoint Kevin Keyes to the Arts and Cultural Diversity Commission for a term ending, uh, August 31st, 2028.
Thank you. Um, is there a motion to appoint Kevin Keyes?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor, please, oop, discussion.
I, I just, I.
Solomon Radner.
Yeah, what was, what was the?
There were two, there were, uh, two members that were interviewed who were wonderful. They were all amazing and, uh, both wanted that one commission. So we split two to two.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
And so that's why this is on this one.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions?
No.
Discussion?
Thank you.
Okay. Do you want a roll call for this? Nope? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried, thank you.
Okay, 10A2, Mr. City Clerk as well.
Yeah, the same thing, we didn't get to this appointment. Uh, this is a request to appoint Ian Cochran to the Building Boards of Appeal, uh, for a term ending August 31st, 2028.
So moved. Second.
Okay, discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, Mr. City Clerk, 10A3 as well.
Also, okay. Uh, also before you, and I think we put this out on your, on, uh, the dais, um, we have a resolution adopting board and commission member expectations and staff liaison responsibilities. There are two documents that, um, uh, formalizes some final discussions that we had previously regarding,
um. Can I have those two handy?
These, these, these items. And so it's really to help facilitate the efficient operation of, of our boards and commissions. So we'd like to get a buy-in completely on these two documents.
And.
Through this resolution.
Madam Mayor, could I just, um, comment on this before council takes it up? Okay, I, I, I just want to say thank you to the city clerk's office and of course to our, our city attorney's office as well. I look at this, you know, this is my, been here a long time, let's just say. I'm gonna stop saying how, how long because now it's starting to get a little long here, so. But I look at this as a major step forward for us. And, you know, setting these expectations both for staff liaisons and board and commission members is, is really a new frontier. And I'm, I'm hoping that, um, you know, it will receive your support tonight so that we can begin charting a new course here and, and building off of this and make sure that everyone is, is, um, doing what they're supposed to be doing.
Yep, meeting, um, understand what their expectations are, what their limitations are, what their responsibilities are. I think it will clarify for, um, for the staff liaison and for the members, um, what their limits are and what their, uh, jobs are. So there is, we need to adopt a resolution, adopting board and commission member expectations and staff liaison responsibilities. We need a motion to adopt.
So moved. Second.
Okay. Um, any discussion or questions about specific things on these member expectations?
Madam Mayor, can I just further comment?
Please.
Not as much directly related to this, but one of the things that should the Juneteenth ordinance receive a second reading and then go into adoption, I just want to remind council that there will be, I think it's seven seats, but there will be those appointments that will need to happen out of our normal cycle.
Right.
And then just a reminder that our plan, and I believe we're still committed to this, is to look to do the mandatory training in, I think we said October?
November.
November, okay. And that training, we're gonna be recording that and providing, uh, video copies or whatever on a go-forward basis. But at this first point, we expect that not only will staff receive the training, but also, uh, boards and commission members, um, who, whom you appoint.
Absolutely. Absol- and I think it will help, um, meetings run more smoothly if everyone understands Robert's Rules of Order and how to run a meeting and, um, when it's someone's turn to speak and, and such like that. It just helps us run effective meetings, um, even when we disagree, uh, in a civilized way. So, are we ready to vote?
Uh, question, Madam Mayor?
Question, yes.
Uh, with the training that we are going to provide, I have gotten questions, is that gonna be a Saturday or is that gonna be during the week? Because of Saturdays, that conflicts with some days of worship and then, you know, during the week.
Evening.
Conflicts with work. So are we gonna do a hybrid where if you can't make it, there's a video? Or is it going to be the case where, um, it's mandatory to be in person for those, right?
Well, I think there's still some discussion that needs to take place about when we say mandatory, what that means. And I certainly think council needs to decide what that is. Um, that is for council to decide. But I will say that in our discussion so far, we have decided that we need to make it as accessible as possible. So not just one date, but maybe several, um, maybe even some during the day, some in the evening, weekends, whatever it may be, um, so that there's more than one session to provide access to everybody.
Mm-hmm. Right. We, we want everyone to get the training, feel it's a wonderful way to improve your leadership skills. Uh, nobody's born knowing how to run a meeting and, um, uh, to learn, um, these kinds of things is, is helpful to facilitate, uh, getting things done in a respectful way.
Agreed. Madam Mayor.
Madam Mayor, may I ask a question?
Please. Mayor Pro Tem Sean Whitehead.
Thank you. City Manager, this is going to include though that the liaisons are to help with the events that they've done, like, is that like kind of dependent on past practice language that's in there and time availability language? Because I don't see it in there that they're going to do the events still.
Help with events?
Oh, gosh, I'd have to go back and skewer this thing. So I do want to emphasize that this is where it gets a little murky here. So this is the, let's call this the bare minimum standard, okay? But it doesn't preclude me assigning the staff to other responsibilities and roles as part of an event, as part of whatever, so.
So for AC/DC, for example, the candy's not going, not get ordered for 4th of July, right?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
But again, just to stress, this is just, I would say better way to describe it is a baseline for what their responsibilities are relative to the Board and Commission Members' responsibilities.
And are we ready to vote? This just requires a voice vote, correct? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Then we are on B, Department of Public Works.
And we have our Deputy City Manager of Public Works and Municipal Services, the longest title in the city, Dave DeCosta. Here he is.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Manager Tungate. Before you tonight is an approval of an emergency purchase for a library HVAC heating coil for the cost of $29,917. Recently, a heating coil in the library air handling unit began to leak beyond repair. Maintenance staff brought in two contractors to investigate and repair, provided quote for repair. A mix of repair options were provided ranging from $30,000 to over $250,000. We're looking approval, we're looking for approval to make the least expensive repair for a total amount of $29,917. Due to the timing and lead time to custom fabricate the new heating coil, the Department of Public Works is requesting this to be approved as an emergency purchase. Per our purchasing guidelines, there's a couple of things that need to be met. One of them is the City Manager shall report such purchases and circumstances to the City Council, which we're doing tonight. The other is upon determination of an emergency by the City Council, the Council may proceed with purchases or contracts and waive such requirements for competitive sealed bidding as the Council may determine necessary under these circumstances. So as I stated, this is the City Manager's report to you. He has administratively approved this project. The project was not anticipated, however, there are funds in the Building Maintenance, Repairs and Maintenance Account. And it is recommended tonight for the City Council to waive the competitive bidding requirements and award the emergency purchase of the library heating coil to Web Mechanical of Taylor, Michigan for the total cost of $29,917. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Do we have any motion yet? Need a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Waive the bidding. Questions for the emergency approval of this purchase with bidding waived? My question is, have we used this company before?
Yes, we've used Web Mechanical as well as a partner, their partner on this job for many a project. So we're very comfortable with them.
So we're comfortable with them? Other question?
Madam Mayor, just one question, please.
Yes, Mayor Pro Tem Sean Whitehead.
Did the AC just break recently?
So it wasn't necessarily the AC, it's a heating coil. We've, the heating coil is probably 50 years old.
How many?
Fifty. We've converted it to a newer refrigerant. However, some of the coils have deteriorated so bad, it's, we cannot replace it anymore.
So this is going to be important for the winter?
That's why we're asking for the emergency purchase now so we can get it fabricated and up for the winter.
Madam Mayor, if I could, Dave, so obviously this is not a situation where we like to put ourselves in, being that it's an emergency purchase and a rarely-used part of our purchasing ordinance. I guess my question, I know you and I have talked about this, but I'm hoping you can share a little bit more information with City Council. You know, this sort of is a Band-Aid, correct? I mean, we're not really getting to where we need to go here with this thing.
Yes, I mean, like I said, there's, this is the cheapest option. They range up to over $250,000. That's for an all-new air handling unit, new ductwork, new thermostats, new fans, and a new heating coil. We are essentially going to attempt to pull the heating coil out of a 50-year-old air handling unit and slide a new one in. So this isn't a permanent fix. I've talked to the City Manager. Obviously, we're looking to do some demolition in parts of these buildings with the community center. And it would not make good fiscal sense to go in and throw a lot of money at something where we really don't know what the future holds for the rest of that building. So we've decided to go with the cheapest option, just in case some things happen in a couple of years.
Questions? Discussion? Ready to vote?
Mayor McClellan?
Yes.
Councilmember Radnor?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Whitehead?
Yes.
Councilmember Crawford?
Yes. Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of council, that completes the City Manager Report for this evening. Thank you.
Well, we have one wonderfully unexpected thing that we get to do tonight. Our former member of City Council, beloved member Carolyn Burns is here today. And we have an award that we would like to present her with.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
If I may, but I'd like to be able to go over the presentation that we had for her at Juneteenth.
Sounds good. Even better.
Be the change you want to see in the world. This quote, often attributed to Mahatma Gandhi, emphasizes the idea that positive change starts with individual actions and choices rather than waiting for others to initiate it. It encourages self-responsibility and proactive engagement in creating a better world. This quote embodies a person who is a true visionary and a trailblazer. This quote embodies our own Carolyn Burns. Carolyn Burns has been an Oak Park resident for over 25 years and served on the Oak Park City Council for over 11 years. Carolyn served on numerous Boards and Commissions, including beautification, AC/DC, public safety, Brownfield Commission, retirement system, corridor improvement, recycling and environmental, library board of directors, planning and conservation, and parks and recreation. She was also instrumental in the formation of the Juneteenth Committee where she helped secure thousands of dollars for Oak Park youth who participated in the Juneteenth Scholarship Program. Carolyn has been a good and faithful servant to the residents of Oak Park. And during her last council meeting on January 6th, 2025, Mayor Marion McClellan stated Carolyn is dependable, hardworking, and a credit to public service. She is a true public servant, with an emphasis on the word servant. Be the change you want to see in the world is a call to action that encourages individuals to take ownership of their role in creating a better future. It is a reminder that positive change starts with each of us. And by making conscious choices and taking action, we can contribute to a more positive and just world. So today, don't you cry, you're going to make it. It is my honor and privilege...
Bravo, yeah, get her.
...to present Mayor Carolyn Burns the 2025 Oak Park Juneteenth Trailblazer Award for her outstanding efforts, visions, and years of service. Carolyn, we're so glad that you're here today. We love you and thank you for all that you have done.
Would you like to come up and, should we do the picture with the award?
It's going to feel like we're just taking a council picture.
I am going to talk about the Juneteenth Award that she just got. Former Mayor Pro Tem Carolyn Burns secured probably, I would say, Adam and City Manager can help me run the numbers, but probably close to $20,000 over the past three years to help Juneteenth. So those are serious numbers. We're not talking about $20. I'm talking about with a comma and four zeros behind it. So plus, I mean, that's, and that's, that's just the groundwork that she's done. And because of that, we've given out dozens of scholarships to Oak Park residents, Oak Park students. So her legacy is everlasting, and I'm just so grateful that she was my mentor for so long. So thank you.
And her name is on the scholarships. It's the Carolyn Burns Scholarships.
Yes.
We started her crying again. There we go. Call to the audience. Do we have any cards?
We do, Madam Mayor.
This has to be good. Jesse was my dad's name.
Yeah, good name. So let me talk today. My wife and I have lived on Stratford Street, just south of Nine Mile, for over six years. We've seen efforts already made to address traffic concerns on our street. We appreciate the speed feedback signs and occasional police patrols. However, the issue of cars speeding persists, and we feel stronger permanent measures are necessary to ensure safety for our neighborhood. The speeding situation is especially concerning to us because a school sits at the end of our road, meaning there is a sharp increase in traffic and speeding during school drop-off and pickup hours. On a personal level, my car has been hit twice this year already, causing thousands of dollars of damage. And our neighbors have had similar issues with damage to their property. We respectfully request that the City Council consider installing speed humps along Stratford. These would slow down traffic consistently, increase safety for students walking or biking to school, protect neighborhood families from dangerous speeding, reduce the ongoing strain of police enforcement. There are studies that have been done by the U.S. Department of Transportation that have shown the effectiveness of speed humps to be unquestionable. And these studies are viewable on their website. Our community strongly supports this change, and we believe it will make a measurable difference in neighborhood safety and livability. So thanks for considering.
Thank you for your comments. And we need to let you know that I don't think there's an opening on it right now, but there is a Traffic Safety Board that has been set up. And I'm looking at you for...
I'm in.
All right. Okay.
Good evening. My name, my name is Sam Valk, and I live on 24280 Gardner for the last about 15 years. I have one question. I am a builder and developer, and I've been working throughout the city and outside Oakland County. And we're all paying taxes, which is great. I have one question. This happened to be the only city that we pay taxes, and I can show you that we pay taxes throughout Oakland County. The last day of paying tax in person this year was on the weekend. Not Friday, that the city hall closed once in a while, not Saturday, but on Sunday, the day before holiday. Now, I have to tell you, and I can show you, that every other city, every other city set up the payments in person on the 2nd of September. For whatever reason. I'm just trying to figure out, are we so poor that we have to charge our citizens about 12% interest, commissions, on whatever, on their late payments? Now, I've been told that you can pay through mail or you can do payment through the computer. I understand, and you can drop off the, right. But we are people. And sometimes it happens that we either late or we're trying to be, you know, I always pay my bills in person. I'm sorry, but that's how I do. I'm not a computer gig. I don't know how to pay it over the computer. This is not a request, it's not a requirement. I'm just trying to figure out why in the world this is the only city that requires people to do something instead of paying in person the day after the holiday?
We're going to talk to Sandra?
Thank you.
Can you, thank you for your comments. Can you speak to our Finance Director, Sandra Crawford? We're over there after the meeting, please.
It would be my pleasure. Whoever designed that announcement, and I can, you know, that when it comes in, and it's like I said, from the city to the city to the city. There was a mistake. I personally think that it should have been on the 2nd of September, just like everybody else, or maybe on the 15th, like Wes Bloomfield does. Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. They started doing work on Ratcliffe Place, where I live, on the sidewalks. And I guess they're finished. That's what they say they are. But there's still those probably 15 to 20 squares that are damaged and stuff like that. I'd like to know when this is going to be finished, especially before the winter. And somehow to be noted that in the winter, there's a water accumulation on all the straight squares that were poured. We had it last year. This year, we're going to be taking pictures of it because we really don't have it in the summer. And we'd like to give it to the Board once it's done. And even though it's past the year, that if it's, if it does ice up, that you will replace the sidewalks. I just want to know when they're going to finish with it. The year is up. You want your check? We'd like to have our sidewalks.
Please talk to Dave DeCosta at the end, right there.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Nope. Please come on up. Please come on up. This is a call, a call to save the pool.
Should I sign it now, or can I just...
You can sign it afterwards.
Sorry, everybody. This is a really wonderful night to be here. It was super emotional.
We've invited you and been invited.
I'm so happy to be here to speak. Good evening. I'm Carrie Gustafson, resident at 8901 Oak Park Boulevard, and the creator of the petition on change.org to save the Oak Park outdoor community pool. The city of Oak Park is, has exciting plans under the $44 million bond we voted for, yet decided that 2025 season is promoted to be the last summer the pool will be opened, as it's slated to be demolished this fall to make way for the construction down the road. The Elevate Oak Park renderings, the city planners have proposed an indoor pool as Phase Two, if it's in budget by then at all. The current artist rendering online shows a new rec building and a splash pad adjacent to it, which concerns me. And the debate is constantly that the pool is 70-plus years old, yet so are most of our homes. And if I need a new furnace, I'm not going to tear my house down. The city of Ferndale, Berkeley, and other surrounding areas have recently surveyed and turned down bond proposals for the new pool of any kind because of the cost of something that we already have. The Hawk in Farmington's groundbreaking was in 2019, and their rental was $24 million in an existing facility. That was pre-pandemic, construction cost hikes, tariff threats, et cetera. I fear by the time Phase Two begins, prior to settling on an architect, the quotes will be so much more than we, that we will be left with no pool at all. My ask is that the city schedule a commercial aquatic company to quote a renovation of the outdoor pool, and reconsider the location of an indoor pool concept, and possibly merge them for an indoor/outdoor four-season destination. I wanted to come tonight and share that after launching my independent petition, that over 600 people have signed with this ask in mind, to preserve and elevate this destination, to reallocate any contract for demo of the Oak Park Pool for fall, and the putt-putt grounds at this time, so that the pool can be scheduled to open in 2026. I think it's environmentally important to keep our pool out of the landfill, and preserve and restore first and foremost. Build upon and promote this historical landmark to be an envied and celebrated destination with a future swim club, parties, events, that will further entice families to move here and have fun here. The pool is one of our town's best-kept secrets. Let's ensure that we continue to provide a local place for water safety, community exercise and play for people of all ages, which I think is so fundamental in our Great Lakes State. Thank you so much. Thank you for my interruption.
Thank you for coming. Thank you for being politically active. There are lots of leadership roles available in Oak Park that we invite you to join up and use your skills. Want to be part of the group? We want, we want your input. Thank you for your well-thought-out comments.
I appreciate it.
And looking at the pool, it's heartbreaking, because it looks fine on the outside. It just looks perfect. Like, why would they tear this down? But the guts on the inside are falling apart, and we have had company come two or three times a week to repair the pool to be good enough to go another day. So it doesn't need a, but thank you. Thank you for your comments. I appreciate your...
There's so much more to say, but I'll send an email, because I did talk to a pool company with the differences between renovation costs and building a brand-new facility, and what, how we could stretch those bond dollars. So I will follow up with more details if that's okay.
Please send a detailed, we welcome your input. Please send, this is my cell number and email address. Love to hear from you. Hope to, hope to hear from you again, and there is a recreation board that it sounds like you have a lot of interest in. There isn't an opening at this moment, but it looks like it's got your name on it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Okay, so council comment, did you finish your comment?
Well, once again, that was such a good speech, I kind of lost my words, but we do want to invite the community to come out on Saturday. Last dip, there's going to be prizes, there's going to be giveaways, and we'd like to send the pool off in style. So come on out.
And what's Sunday? What's happening Sunday?
Yeah, Sunday is the dog, dog day afternoon, where I guess the dogs, well, they have the last say.
They do.
Right? They'll be the last ones to swim in that pool. So come on out. We'd love to see you both days. If it's too cold, that's okay, we'll still be out there.
We'll play anyway.
That's right. Dog day at the pool.
Dog day, so Saturday?
Last dip.
The last day, the last dip? And what are the hours again? One to five?
The hours are, it's going to be at 1:00 P.M., and it's 1:00 P.M. until, no, I'm just kidding. I don't know when the, when it ends.
Six.
One to six. All right.
One to six?
Making that, and then the dogs, you register your dog, little dogs get one hour, the medium-sized dogs get the next hour, and the big dogs get the third hour. And it is a hoot to watch those dogs in that water. You need to come on by and laugh while the dogs are playing in the water. There being no further business to come before this council, this meeting is adjourned.